Like to now call the city council meeting to order today, Tuesday, April 19th. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public hearings.
Let's roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry, jumped ahead. Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Present.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings. Public hearings on the 2022 to bash 2023 budget and capital improvement plan. The city fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. Under section 7.4 of the charter, public hearing is required on the budget, which must be adopted no later than May 15th of each year. A study session was held on Tuesday, April 12th, and a budget discussion is on the agenda for later on this evening. An original budget study session, an optional budget red, budget study session is scheduled for April 26th. The budget calendar anticipates adoption of the budget at the May 3rd, 2022 meeting. At this time, the public has an opportunity to comment on the 2020-23 budget and capital improvement plan. Letters sent to the city council will not be read publicly. The public will have five minutes at the podium if they'd like to speak about the budget. Would anybody like to talk?
I'm Adam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is John Helge. I live at 450 Cedar Street. I'm just here to say thank you. Thank you for the hard work that you have all done in crafting the budget for this city for the next fiscal year. You're working with a finite amount of money. That's the one thing that many people don't understand about local government, and I certainly appreciate that fact, and you're making our tax dollars stretch as far as they possibly can be stretched. You've got some other new little pots of money that are out there that you're going to be looking at but are probably not engaged directly in this operating budget for the fiscal year. I would challenge you and the ARPA funds that that are available and other funds that will be coming down from the federal government, understanding full well, those are one-time, you know, they end up here and they're, it's gotta be sustainable, whatever you do with those, with those dollars. So it's a challenge. It's a challenge, but again, I think you've done well. One point I would like to make, just in support, is when we look at what's gotta happen at the landfill with understanding the amount of water, the amount of contamination from PFOS and other toxic chemicals, I think it's better for you now to invest the money in the monitoring wells and doing that because it's better to know today what you're up against and then be able to craft a cost-effective and financially feasible remediation plan in the future, once we figure out what to do with PFOS. So again, that's one of the things that I know is on your budget. I know that there's alternatives there for financing that, and I suggest that you really look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Helge. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Ruth Pratt. I live at 463 Forest Street. Something got mentioned last time when I was here, and it was for $35,000 for a new bathroom for the city garage.
Ma'am, can I interrupt you for a minute? This is about a public hearing just on the budget.
Well, wouldn't that be part, that was part of the budget.
Okay, just wanted to be.
That was on the budget, the $35,000 for a new bathroom for the city garage. And I just was kind of curious, as a taxpayer, are we talking showers? I mean, are we talking shower stalls like you would maybe have for a gymnasium? Are we just talking a new bathroom? Because I think I have a nice home. I don't have a $35,000 bathroom, you know, and I just, I, it isn't that I don't want them to have what they need, and $35,000 in your budget, that's, but when Mr. McCullough said, "Well, that includes a new floor," I thought, "Well, for $35,000, it should." So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else?
Seeing none, we will move on. Now it's time for citizens' comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on a gen, I probably should have closed the public hearing.
I need a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
You don't need a motion, you don't need a motion to close it.
Okay.
It just closes.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Going once, going twice. Hearing none, we will move on. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine manners. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda, consent agenda items include payroll, invoices, notifications regarding next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion, including the approval of minutes. I'll say.
Yes, well, okay, roll call. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
I mean, sorry. Yes. Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Consideration of awarding the demolition bid for the 150 Monroe Street to Boyle Contracting LLC for the amount of $12,960. The residents at 150 Monroe Street have been ordered by the courts to be demolished. Residents previously sustained fire damage, and the city has received $13,000 from the insurance company for demolition. As part of our anti-blite efforts, the city has solicited sealed bids for demolition. The lowest bid received was from Boyle Contracting LLC for $12,960. At this time, council could take action to award Boyle Contracting LLC the demolition bid in the amount of $12,960.
I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Happy to see that baby go.
I'm sure the neighborhood would appreciate that. All right. Hearing no further comments, could you take roll call? Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman. Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of granting a right of entry to the United States Army Corps of Engineers. The United States Army Corps of Engineers has requested a right of entry to be grant, be granted to allow access for construction work on the South Breakwater. Improvements to the Breakwater are planned to begin in late 2022 and completed in 2023. Access to the Breakwater parcel will be through First Street Beach Douglas Park. At this time, council could take action to grant a right of entry to the United States Army Corps of Engineers to allow for construction activities on the South Breakwater.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Discussion?
I've got a question. Is this going to interfere with the parking lot and the ring road that we have planned?
The lower parking lot will be closed during the construction period, and the, the Army Corps contractor will be occupying that with their equipment and staging. So we had some discussions with them about them using just a portion of it, but with the in and out, my plan is to allow them to close that off completely if they're not, and they don't have a contractor awarded yet, but if we have further discussions with the contractor and they're able to secure just a portion, then we'll leave that open the rest of it for the public. With the timing of the project, it will overlap when we plan on doing the improvements at First Street Beach, particularly the replacement and reconstruction of that parking lot. So we plan on continuing with the repaving of the loop, adding the new parking, realigning that stuff, and then we may have to delay repaving that lower parking lot until after that the core construction is.
Thank you.
I'm just surprised that they're getting started on it so early after their visit to the city to look it over. I thought it would be at least a couple of years before they'd take action on it, so I'm happy that they're moving forward. It's good news, despite the fact that it's going to be a little crowded down there.
Construction zone.
And, Mayor, they're quite eager for us to get this in front of council. They, I think they need to have this approved before they even bid it out.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of awarding a contract for water tower improvements. Based upon regular inspections and recommendations from our water tower consultant, Dixon Engineering, the city has planned out improvements for both water towers. The projects were publicly advertised with seven bids being received. LC United Painting Company, $291,000. LNT Painting Company, $306,400. Seven Brothers Painting Inc., $33,377,000. ENL Contractors, $337,800. George Countopols Painting, $373,300. Viking Painting LLC, $397,700. MW Coal Construction LLC, $429,800. Engineers Estimate, $327,000. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the documents. At this time, council could take action to award the contract to low bidder LC United Painting Inc. in the amount of $291,000 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreements. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Or?
Discussion?
The only question I have is, is there any work other than the painting in this $291,000?
There is. There's, normally when we do the, when we have the towers inspected, Dixon's inspectors will look at all the components, all the steel components of the structure. Usually when we do these paintings, they're 15 years apart, so there's always some upgrades to safety factors like railing, tie-offs. Sometimes there's items such as the drain portions of the tank that the state would like us to improve, so in incorporate, so the Maywood tank, which is south of town, actually will have an interior coat within the inside, and then there's some safety features on the discharge side of that. The industrial tank on the north side of town is an exterior coat of paint, and then it has some additional steelwork on the outside of it, but it brings them up to, up to current codes and standards.
Great, thank you.
Have we ever dealt with this company? I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Have we ever dealt with this company before? Do they come highly recommended? What kind of other projects have they done?
Usually all of these contractors, that's what they do, and then that's, quite frankly, that's why we got seven bids, is there's a pool of those contractors that do these projects in the Midwest, and they're always watching, always submitting. Typically, when, when they have a gap in their schedule is when you see them get aggressive on their bids. Otherwise, they, they will submit a higher bid just to keep tabs on what everybody's pricing them. I don't think we've, I don't know if you guys have worked with them, Sean?
Our company has, and Dixon Engineering.
So, so when we did this, Dixon is our specialty engineer that, that does the inspections on the towers, and then when we do capital improvements, we take the recommendations from Dixon. Spicer then compiles them into the bid documents and, and helps us then manage the implementation of that locally. So, I don't know if you could hear Sean, but he said that their company does have experience with the painter, and Dixon Engineering has quite a bit of experience with them.
And when are they gonna start the work, and when do you think they'll complete it?
I don't know that.
I don't know. We gave them the summer to get the work done.
Yeah. So once we award this, we'll get their schedule from them, but it'll be this summer, is what we expect.
Okay.
Jeff, when you're, when you're doing all that inside work, are they gonna put that water tower mixer in there right away?
So that's something we didn't have budgeted as part of this project, so the tower mixers are something we included in our capital improvement request for the upcoming budget. So that's something that we would add on at a later time.
That's still gonna cost $20,000?
Correct. And we plan on doing one this year and then one next year. The installation of that is not very difficult from my understanding, but it does require some additional electrical work. So there could be a chance, if council approves the budget and that stays in the budget, and the contractor's able to install that after July 1st, we do, we could have the opportunity to change order of that into this contract. But next year, we're gonna bud, or do another budget request, put a mixer in the, the other tower as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else have any questions? Looking at the end of the table. All right, roll call. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Notices, communications, and announcements. A report from the Alternatives for Area Youth. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency. At this time, Ms. Sheila Kaminsky will report on the activities, the Alternatives for Area Youth, and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. No action is required on this item. Welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members, old friends, new friends. Your faces all seem to change. I keep coming back. I'm not sure what, what that means. The Alternatives for Area Youth has assigned the task of running the warming shelter at Sands Park way in the beginning. They took over running it full-time, as far as I know, and I work for them. I am the director, and there's one other employee, and we do our best to keep it open every day that we can for the kids to come after school, and we are only open till 6:00 these days. Used to be, we were open after school till 8:00 or 9:00, but two years ago, everything changed. I don't know what, what to do about that yet. We haven't figured out how to right ourselves, but 2-6 seems to be a really good time for getting everybody that we want to hit at the moment. Come summer, that's gonna be another story, because I see a turn of events with the students that we have now. Again, we have a new generation of kids. Every, I've seen several generations of kids. Some of them have been a lot easier to cope with, some of them have not. Right now, we have a really good bunch of kids, and I, I see a lot of good things coming for them. Hopefully, we can keep them entertained and show them how to entertain themselves. That's what we do at the Rec at Sands Park. We changed the name recently from the Teen Center to the Rec at Sands Park because we were getting a lot of blowback about, "I can't go there, I'm not a teen," or parents were like, "I can't send my kids there, there's teenagers there." Well, it's open to everybody. It's always been open to everybody, but there was a time when it was just this line and this line, and if you were under 14, you couldn't come. If you were over 17, you couldn't come. Well, everybody comes. Parents come, grandparents come, they bring their little siblings, everybody comes. So it's the Rec at Sands Park. We offer equipment for the basketball courts, the tennis courts. We don't have skateboard equipment, most of them come with their own. I have those kids with new interest in skateboards. I've seen a lot more skateboards than I have in the last couple of years, and some of them are real interested in how this came about and what are all those skateboards on the wall for, and, you know, because they don't, haven't done that in a long time, and the skateboards that I do have on the wall are very old. Bachman would bring most of those kids. The kids now, they would like to see a new ground for them to skate on. The asphalt is kind of crumbling and melting, and the equipment is sinking down into it, and they'd like to see, so I keep encouraging them. It got here by kids just like you, going out and getting it done. It's not gonna be given to you, you have to go out and work for it, and I try to direct them in the right ways to go to get that done. I don't know if it's happening yet, but the stirrings are there. We had a great ice skating season. It was short, but it was very nice. We had a lot of people, just on the weekends. Weekdays, it was harder for everything because of the weather, but seems like Friday, when it snowed, we'd have people show up Saturday morning and shovel it off, and they could skate all weekend, and it was great fun. We had a lot of, we had a lot of people in there, and we were blessed with a lot of donations. People bringing skates, people filling the can that sits on the counter with money, and it was very nice. Everybody was happy to get out. The first pandemic winter, that was scary because we didn't know what was gonna happen, but we pulled it off. We did our best to follow the rules and keep everybody safe, and this last year was wonderful. It was one of the best skating seasons we have had so far. Now we're just trying to pack up and get ready to move forward into summer. I don't know, what else can I tell you? What do you need to know that I can tell you?
What kind of maintenance issues are you having with the ramps? Are they all in pretty good shape?
The ramps themselves are in pretty good shape. They get a lot of painting from the city department because there's a lot of artists out there that like to put pretty good.
The Parks Department is responsible?
Parks Department comes and they paint over them.
How many years have you been there?
I started in 2003.
You're coming, because I know you're a mainstay, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Try it.
Do we have any safety equipment for this skate park? Do we have helmets, knee pads, anything like that?
I have a couple of things in the closet if somebody wants it, but they usually bring their own. We don't offer them, you know, if there happens to be. This year, for the ice skating rink, we were blessed with a donation, and we acquired some trainers for the little kids to go out and push around on the ice. That was a big hit. First week they were there, the teenagers kind of made them all collapse, but after we got them off of them, it was great. The kids loved them.
How many do you have in summertime, Sheila?
How many?
Oh, you get very, many kids?
We get a lot of park traffic, just park traffic, and the neighborhood kids. No, but nothing real outstanding. We gave up doing dances and stuff like that because it was being covered by the school so much. Every time we planned an event, it seemed like the school was having an event. Kennedy School was having the same kids, so we tried to focus on other things that they can do. We don't really give them a lot of ideas. I like to give them like a foosball tournament, pool tournament, something like that. I'm looking this summer to finding some kind of a Tony Hawk event that they can have, you know, but.
Good, thank you.
That'll bring a nice crowd, you know. Right now, after school, we get two dozen kids in there, boom, and they are there until 6:00.
Do they play at Cornhole? Do you have any little games?
I'm sorry?
At Cornhole?
Cornhole, we do have Cornhole. Yeah, we do. I throw it out in the lawn. We were offered a slip and slide for the summer. I don't know what will happen there. We'll try it.
Are you open on the weekends?
We, only during ice skating season do we open on Sunday. We're open six days a week, year-round, but not on Sunday except for ice skating, because we like to get all of that, use of that ice skating rink as we can.
So right now, you're not open on the weekend?
We're open on Saturday.
Okay.
Not on Sunday. Sunday's the only day.
Is it still 2-6 on the week, on the Saturday?
Correct.
Okay. How do people find out about your rec, what do you call it, rec?
The Rec at Sands Park?
That's it.
I didn't bring any of those fancy little flyers that we have. We have those, and we distribute those wherever we can. The ice skating rink brought every student from Kennedy School down on a couple of different days. We parted it out. We used to do it at the elementary schools. We used to have Jefferson kids come over and spend the day skating, and then we send them all home with a flyer, and things being what they are, this year, we got to send the flyer electronically to every house, which was really nice, but every kid at Kennedy got to skate. It was tricky, but we did it.
Out-of-town grants, children have enjoyed running RC cars on those ramps.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it. There was one inside today, getting down and.
Not mine, another half, yeah.
No. No. Do you have any, like, policies on fighting or rules? And if you get a kid that's just out of control, and how do you deal with that?
Personally, myself and Mrs. Sheathelm, who works there also, we try to treat them all like they're our own, that's the first bottom line. If they're getting out of hand, if they can't contain themselves, they're asked to leave, go home, call your mom, you're out of here for a few days. If it gets to a point where they are actually throwing fists at each other, and, you know, if they do it inside, we can throw them out and say, "Go home, don't come back here unless you come with a parent, and we'll talk about you coming back." If they do it outside, I don't have much to do other than call the officers, who will come and give them the what for. Usually, they're broke up by the time they go. There hasn't been anything too bad that I know about. They're kids. We try to let them be kids as much as they can, and if they're out there fighting, if I walk out the door and I see three kids rolling on the ground, and the other guys are all laughing at them, and I say, "What are you doing?" You know, and they go, "Oh, we're just playing, leave us alone." Or if I go out another time and I see them standing in a crowd that looks like it's brewing into something ugly, because I've seen that a lot, they look at me and go, "What do you want?" I say, "No, what do you want? Do you want me to call the police, the ambulance, or your parents?" You know, and pretty soon, they break up and they go away. They shouldn't be doing that there. I can't stress to them enough how they need to treat each other, and that's what we do there. We try to teach them how to act in public. I have kids that come, and they just don't know, you know, how not to be loud, how not to jump on the guy sitting next to them, or it, just stuff like that. So that's, we try to teach them how to, how to maintain in public, and when I'm really mad at them, I say, "Go to A&amp;W and do that." They won't let us. Okay. That's the point. They get it, they get it.
So do you mostly get Kennedy and middle school kids, or what, what would you say?
Kids from the high school come, there's a, there's quite a few. Most of them are right from that neighborhood.
Okay.
The biggest chunk come from Kennedy, all the fifth graders. Some sixth, seventh graders come from 12th Street. Not too many older kids. One or two of the older kids will come and, because they want to be around somebody who is there, or we have it not like. is there, or we have it not like we used to. It's different.
And, and nobody from Jefferson, probably, or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
I had a lot of Jefferson friends, a lot of Jefferson friends. You'd be surprised. And of course, we tell them, you know, they should be left here if they're under ten without somebody. And they go, "Oh, well, there's brothers here," or "I'll be right back." And we just live down the street. It's a public park, it's a public building. We're there to make sure that everything stays safe.
I'm kind of curious whether most of the kids come from that side, which I'm thinking west of thirty-one.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. They're starting to come across the road. Oh, yeah.
Just wondering, because most of them are probably walkers, if that's a problem at all.
Yeah, and they're little. The ones that come across that highway just blow me away. It's like, wow, you know, but I was that age once and I had to learn how to cross a four-lane highway, so.
So, do you, do you have any needs? Is everything, I mean, how, how's everything going in terms of equipment and facility?
Well, I think we're doing our best to keep up. There's things that need, always need repair. And I know I always ask Jeff and Mickey, something's broken, or I need lights, or the water's not running, the heat's not on, something, anything major like that. If I can't handle it, I'll fix it. If it's a piece of molding on the wall, I'll nail one off, I can do that. You know, little things I can probably handle, but I usually call on them for most of everything. The big, big idea, no, what is it called? Big?
Big Day of Service?
Big Day of Service, thank you. I just, it lost me. We have signed up to paint the building with those people this year, I guess. We had a young lady volunteer, she came in and said, "I think we need to paint this building." I said, "Well, how do we do that?" So, they, she knew what to do. So, she took charge and I guess we're going to paint the building this June. That'll be nice. We are also working with the city to get a shipping container of some kind put at Sands Park to hold all of our winter skates and floor and maybe that ice rink. I don't know what they're going to put in there exactly, but we would like the skates there where we can kind of get our hands on them and get them cleaned up and ready sooner than we have. And they've always come back so dirty from the garage that it takes us days to get it, to get them ready. So, we thought, "Well, we'll just keep them here and this thing outside and we can get at them and clean them whenever we want and add to them." Or I threw away a lot of skates, I have to say. They were so old. There were skates there that were eighty years old. They had to be. And I sent a few to the museum. But they weren't usable, we couldn't, and they're just taking up space, so. But the ones we have now are about four hundred pair.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, if we ever had four hundred people out there on the rink at once, it would be great, and I think we have had, but.
Do you ever collaborate at all with the Armory Youth Project or anything like that?
I don't know, we talk once in a while, but we do so different. Both of our things are so different, it's not really conducive to collaboration so much as, you know, well, we're over here and you're over there and we can play tennis together, I guess. The kids tell me, "They're not open, that's why we're here." Okay, all right, you know, so you're welcome here anytime.
Thank you very much for, it was heartwarming to hear you talk about the center. I really enjoyed your speech.
It's a big part of my heart, I can tell you that.
You're very genuine, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else I can do for you, just let me know. Thanks.
Next is discussion on fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three budget. Administration has prepared the proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. It was introduced to council and the community at the April fifth, twenty twenty-two council meeting by the Finance Director. A public hearing to review these budget recommendations and receive public input on them took place earlier in this evening. In addition to tonight's discussion, a budget study session took place on April twelfth and an optional study session on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, is scheduled. The budget calendar anticipates adoption of the budget at the May third, twenty twenty-two meeting. No action is required on this item. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Radford.
Heather's putting up a list of some of the summarized changes.
Okay.
Council, after the last budget work session, what I normally do, go back and we'll revise the budget. This is one part of it, there's other changes that still need to be made, but I wanted to make sure that I had captured the consensus of council at the last meeting. So, the first change was to reject the half mill proposed refuse millage increase to cover the PFAS contamination. Second change was to reject the proposed three and a half percent water and three and a half percent sewer rate increase. And then, to offset that, we'll be taking the twenty twenty-two marijuana proceeds and putting that towards the amount of revenue that would have been lost in the water and sewer fund. So, that's forty-five thousand for water and about a hundred and eight thousand for sewer. Can you scroll down here? And then restrict a hundred thousand of the remaining marijuana proceeds for use towards the future PFAS expenses, which is about what the half mill raised. And then, we talked extensively about Housing North and the Manassaria Chamber of Commerce and the consensus, I think, was to leave those in the budget because they'll be coming back in front of council at a later date with a contract, at which time, there can be more discussion and/or changes made. Those were the changes that I remember us having and that there was kind of a consensus on from the last work session.
I, I'm sorry, I was under the impression a little bit differently. I agree with you on the twenty thousand for the Housing North, and I thought that we were just going to pay the Chamber twenty thousand in budget for that. So, I just remember it differently.
I thought we were going to just stick with the twenty thousand for the Chamber. I agree with you.
Okay.
Twenty thousand, is that out of forty?
Yep, that's what we paid them with.
Then we had sixty in the budget, right?
Yeah, but that was just-
That was-
No, we had forty in the budget.
Forty.
We only paid them twenty this-
Already paid a point.
Yeah, so I think with putting the twenty thousand, my, my opinion, I'm speaking out of term probably, but my opinion is because we're putting twenty thousand towards the Housing North, which was a big part of what we were anticipating the Chamber to help us with, is a good reasoning for it.
My two cents for, I think I'm in a majority already, but I think we should have left the money in there for the Chamber. I know there's a lot of partners that have committed to helping with these projects and part of that commitment was because we were at the table, so we may lose some partnerships in the process of not putting that way into budget, but that's one voice.
No, my question is, if, if the Chamber comes back, we have twenty thousand in the budget and they basically make a reasonable argument why they need the extra twenty, we could still amend the budget, correct, to be able to provide that twenty thousand?
Absolutely. It's just how it's presented and what council's preference is.
So, if I, am I clear that we're going to pay the twenty thousand to Housing North? We're committed to Housing North now? We're going to stay with that? Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
And that's where we're on agreement on that?
Well, I'm in agreement on it, I don't know if that-
I'm in agreement with that, I just didn't, I also doubt that.
Yeah, I think that's, we were okay with that.
Yeah. I would go clear to forty-two, but, okay, we'll see where that goes down the road.
Right.
Because wasn't it, the reason that we did that was because Housing North is going to be doing some of the same things we wanted Chamber to do? Isn't that why we backed on that? Isn't that what we're thinking of us?
There seemed to have been some overlap and that was the question. Without hearing from the Chamber, that's why I'm hoping that at least the twenty thousand is still on the table when we do hear from the Chamber.
Yeah, we're making assumptions there that we're not a hundred percent sure about, right?
Correct.
I mean, I'm not sure that there, that there's an overlap with the Chamber and Housing North.
So, the discussion I had suggested was to leave it as it wasn't budget and then council has another bite at that apple. When a contract comes forward to council, they can approve or deny it, or they can make their case. But it doesn't make any difference to me, I just want to make sure we captured council's thoughts properly, so that's why we have this up here to be able to discuss it.
I did approach the Chamber, I think they, I'm talking with Stacy today, they wanted to discuss it further, so there wasn't, I think there'll be more to come on that, or we'll at least discuss it internally a little bit more.
Is this something that ARPA funds can be used for? Because the county has got, the county received four million dollars, I think, and, and I don't know whether they can chip in more. So, that's, that's a question in the back of my mind as well, when we consider how much to give the Chamber.
Excuse me?
Aren't those funded by the ARPA on our budget?
That was the intention. Remember, the ARPA funds are going to be used to offset general operating expenses and then they become unrestricted, so that's the plan. So, so the answer is yes, they can be used. The problem with that is eventually you run out of the unrestricted-
You only have three years.
Regularly.
I think we wanted the Chamber to come up here and talk to us because, you know, they do this every year and don't show up. You know, you like to talk to them and see what they want.
And I, I don't have a problem with asking the county if they have any intention to, to boost their, I don't know what their contribution is already to the Chamber, or if they have a contribution to the Chamber.
Yeah, I'm not sure what-
I believe they just did a three-year, forty thousand a year commitment with the Chamber.
Okay.
I'm still not hearing necessarily consensus on how we want to present it in the, we can do it either way, whatever council's preference is.
I'm, I'm happy with leaving the twenty, leaving it as twenty thousand. If they have a, want to come forward at a later date and say, "Hey, we need additional money for this," hopefully, we'll have some extra money.
Yeah, I would say let them know that twenty thousand's a risk, they need to, twenty thousand at risk. If they need that in the twenty, they probably need to shut off the doctor there. When would they, when would they do that, though? Before the budget, we got to come back for work sessions over there?
Do we know when their contract?
We had it tentatively on the, scheduled for the third of May.
Well, we can approve it, which is the twenty, and then amend it if you decide to change it, right?
You, you can approve, direct staff to change the budget so it only includes twenty thousand, and then hear from the Chamber, get a contract, whatever council needs to be comfortable with that, and then if they decide, if you decide to appropriate more money, we can do a budget amendment. Or you can leave it in as is, bring it, they can come to council, make their pitch with a contract or whatever, and if council's not happy, then they just don't fund it at forty, they fund it at the twenty, or whatever other amount they want. So, either way works, again, it's just, it's just how it's presented.
I would like it changed back to twenty and then go from there.
Okay, we, we'll make that change and I think they hear it.
We're not unfamiliar with budget amendments after we pass the budget, so.
It's true. It's, it's only good as, as long as the ink is dry and then it changes after that, so.
It's amazing. Okay, anything else, or is there something underneath this?
I don't have anything else. This is the consensus of the changes from the last time.
Mayor, my only suggestion is that if, if we're comfortable with these changes, then I'm not really sure that we need to have the, the other budgeted, or the other scheduled meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Oh, I would agree, if we have a consensus here, these changes.
Yeah, these were exactly the points I thought we covered last time.
Yeah.
You've done exactly what you asked, I don't have any, I need to come back for the meeting.
Anybody have any other questions? If not, thank you very much for your time.
Oh, I still want to know about Morton's. If you remember back in November, I was against the Morton's Park, simply because nothing was in there and when I had talked to Jeff, we were just going to put a table in there and, and a grill maybe, and then we agreed on that. Then, we turned around and said, "Well, you know, Morton's is going to provide," and Morton got sold thirty for them, they were going to provide thirty-five thousand, they get sold to somebody else. Now, we don't know where we stand with this new company. Now, are we paying thirty-five thousand? Because we're putting it into project, capital projects.
So, there was thirty-five thousand dollars of city money in the budget last year.
This is the rollover.
Or, or this year, but that's probably not going to get spent because of timing or maybe a little bit of it, so we let it roll into the next year, but Mr. McCullough can speak more eloquently about that.
So, it's been the desire of the Parks Commission for quite a few years to do some improvements at that park, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Mr. Samansky actually brought that forward into the budget discussions last year. We did reach out to Morton and they were, we were politely told with the new company that they wouldn't be able to provide any additional funding towards that project this year. So, I'm working with the Parks Commission right now and we have laid out all the components that they would like to add to make it kind of a small pocket park, if you will. It would have the addition of a new play structure, primarily like a slide structure, and then a swing set. And then it would also include planting some trees, adding picnic tables, grills, just some of the normal park amenities that aren't currently there. And we've got a meeting Thursday, the Parks Commission does it five-thirty, that we'll be discussing some more of the details of that.
Okay. Last year, they told me they didn't have enough people to handle the park. That's why I was adamant about it. Now, they tell me this year, we can handle it. What changed that they couldn't, now they can?
Who's "they"?
Well, none of your employees.
Right. We have way too many parks for the amount of employees that we have. There's no question.
Is it worth it that we put another park in when they can't? I mean, they're overboard.
I, I hear you.
But they're maintaining that park now, but it's an embarrassment. If we're not going to put money into making it a reasonable and a decent park, then take this sign down and give the property back to Morton's. It's embarrassing to have that park with a city name on it, period.
Right. That's what I'm trying to describe.
And I think, well, and again, I, I think that there's plenty of room for an improved park. You know, we have a, a dog run that is unsanitary and it should be replaced, and that would be an ideal location to have a good dog run on, in the community.
I said about being a bigger-
Yep, but we keep kicking it down the road and it is a pretty sad-looking property. But they're still maintaining it, they're still running out there and they're cutting the lawn, but again, not a whole lot to maintain, but I think that the people on that side of town deserve a nice city park.
I know a young lady here has, has asked for it time to time. Again, I understand that, but is somebody going to, is that other new company going to put in some money for it?
So, I've been working with the Parks Commission, I've been staying on top of it, and they are working very hard in researching what they can put in there that's low maintenance and will be valuable to that part of town. And they deserve something there.
Now, Jeff was going to find the equipment, but are we going to keep it up? Are the Parks Department going to keep it up? Because last year, they couldn't, now they can. So, what is the right thing? Where are we going with this?
We did hire two more seasonal people for this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand your point, but I'm an employee and so when I give that, that, those reflections back to you, I'm being very serious about that, we do not have enough employees to maintain the parks at the level that the community told us last year. In this budget, I requested another full-time position to try to close that gap. That position wasn't able to be funded, so the next best thing was to add two summer employees. I'm praying that we're able to add those employees. Last year, we couldn't even hire the full complement of what we had. But that's, that's how we're going to try to fill the gap in the interim. That park has been talked about for the ten years I've been here, whether, whether or not it should be, we should be all in with it or all out with it. I think that the Parks Commission's, the way that they're looking at it right now is not to make it a huge, I, I mean, because thirty thousand dollars is very little to spend on park expenses, honestly. So, they're looking for something that would be specifically for the neighborhood and for the kids in that area, and they want to add park amenities like a shade structure and picnic tables and grills, so that it becomes kind of a family destination for that neighborhood. They've gone to Casman and looked at what equipment and what type of amenities are there for the people in the area, and so this will not be a duplication of that, be honestly, just a, a nice, smaller pocket park. While I'm up here, can I answer the question that came up here in the public hearing?
Oh, that'd be great, I was thinking about that, just now.
So, it was actually two separate requests that we had two years ago. One was to upgrade both the men's and women's bathrooms at the Public Works. That facility's fifty years old and all those fixtures are fifty years old, so our staff has already repainted everything and done everything internally that we can. This would have been for new fixtures, sinks, faucets, toilets, partitions, and then we had a separate request, request for all the flooring in the offices and in the bathrooms. Those are kind of combined together now to, to get that twenty-five thousand dollar total. Those are kind of combined together now to get that twenty-five thousand dollar total. But if you walk in our offices, you can see we, cleaning them does no good anymore. They're peeling and pulling off the floor, and so that was the extent of the two projects.
So how big is the area for the restroom?
The women's is a smaller. It's a single toilet and sink, and the men's restroom has a urinal, two toilet stalls, three sinks, and it does have a shower.
And that's for, that's thirty-five thousand for the two of them?
It was, I believe it was twenty-five, wasn't it, is it? Thirty-five? Thirty-five for both the bathrooms and all the flooring, but the flooring is not just the bathrooms, it's the hallway, it's the three offices.
Well, I just, I added a second bathroom to my house just a little less than two years ago, and there was not an existing bathroom there. It's only five-by-seven bathroom, it's a full bathroom, and that was twenty-five thousand dollars to put in. So I know there was plumbing to do and electrical to be rerun and all kinds of things, so it can get pretty costly.
Yeah, and this isn't as extensive as that. Most of it's in the flooring, partition, so.
That helps. Thank you. Any other questions on the budget? Mr. Gabowski, are you done asking questions on the budget?
I'm looking.
We'll give you a second.
Go ahead.
Sure. Now it's time for citizens' comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities on areas of our city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Coming to the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Pratt. I live at 463 Fourth Street, and tonight will be the last I'm going to talk to anybody about this. I've decided to be like Frozen and let it go. It's touched a spot in me that's upset me, but I'm not getting anywhere. So as I told you a couple weeks ago, we were seven days without water. Four times the city was there, instead it was not them, and it did end up being on the city. I don't have a problem. I had paid Forbes a hundred and seventy-five dollars. We had went wear hardware, paid a hundred and nine dollars for a pump that my husband had to use every four hours for those seven days, so that we didn't have a mess in our basement. My problem is, we were contacted by Andy Salmon, who said he had been told by the city that he had to give us our part of the bill. And I was a little shocked because I was told earlier, if it was on, if it was a city issue, which the city said four times that it was, we had someone there working from that Sunday to Friday night, when Andy Salmon finally said, it is not you, it is the city. And then they said they'd be back Monday, but because my son sent an email, and Cindy Lundberg responded, she said they'd be here in the morning. When I was here last, the last time, Jeff McCula said he wasn't even aware of the problem until that Friday night, when he heard from Cindy Lundberg. I was really taken back by that, to think that four times the city had been there, sometimes with two workers, they were called out on a Sunday before Forbes would even come for us, and then when I was told that we needed to pay Andy Salmon two hundred and fifty dollars on top of what we spent out, so altogether, we put out five hundred and thirty-four dollars on something that, it was a plug, and it was way down, it was down the line. I, my husband and I have discussed it, it's not worth, we can afford to pay it, but what about when you see in the paper that we have forty percent of people in this town that are living in poverty and are struggling, single moms? What if I was a single mom and had to pay five hundred and thirty-four dollars for something that wasn't my fault? What I'm looking for is some accountability. If the city comes and tells you four times, it's not us, I guess I trusted them. Even Andy Salmon said to me the last day when he brought me that bill, he said, I talked to Brandon, I didn't feel you should get a bill, Ruth, but I'm told that we have to turn some of it over to you. It really set me. Now, this morning, the insurance guy called me, very nice man, and he tells me that the city has government immunity. So basically, there's no fighting that. What that means is the city didn't cause the problem. They didn't find the problem, they said it wasn't their problem, but they didn't flush the wipes that caused the problem for this big massive thing, but they didn't have a tool to fix it with, they didn't have a camera to see it with. That was all done by Andy Salmon. And my question is, why don't we have those things? Because Andy said to me, he said, Ruth, I feel so bad. I trusted the city also in thinking it wasn't them. And he worked all week, tried everything. He did try, and we didn't know where our cleanout was behind the garage. He did find that, he found it the first day he was there, but that didn't solve our problem, so Brandon said that we needed to pay for that because he found it. I wouldn't have a problem paying two hundred and fifty dollars for that, but it didn't give me water. We could have went another twenty-eight years. That's how long we've lived in that house and not known where it was. So I'm not going to keep stressing myself over two hundred and fifty dollars, but I feel like it's a slap in the face from the city. And like I said, I think to myself, I'm just lucky that my husband and I can pay that bill. If I was a single mom or living paycheck to paycheck, we wouldn't be able to do it. And we raised five kids in that house, and I think we went out for our meals, we were going other places to go to the bathroom, taking showers at our kids' house. If I'd had those five kids home, what would I do? What would the cost have been then? And I just think that there needs to be some accountability when the city comes and says, it's not us. It sure shouldn't be them, and it shouldn't take four times for them to come and tell you, find out that it is them. That's what's upset me. It isn't the money. I'm not really that trivial. It's the point of it. I brought my kids up to believe there's a principle, and I do feel like this is a slap in the face.
Mrs. Pratt, your five minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Seth Pratt. So I sent some emails recently, and I'm going to try to keep that between council. I have not yet received a response, but I would like it to be noted that I reached out to Mr. Gamble last week in regards to this matter and tried to get some information from him. He threatened me with the city's attorney before he hung up the phone on me, which before I assumed was George Saylor, but now I'm going to assume it's Mr. Wilson since he's here, sitting here tonight, so it's probably still the Micah Myers group. But he never emailed me or told me who I would contact with that. I don't have to see eye to eye with people. I work in administration, I get that, we're not always going to see eye to eye, but I feel like you should be heard. A simple, I'll look into that, I'll get back with you, I'm hearing your concerns, would have been fine. He could have left it at that and not done another thing, and I would have never known. He didn't give me the time of day. I asked simple questions, again, going to accountability. He told me he didn't know the answer. He said city council had not spoken with him. He does not want to hold anybody accountable. I am asking for the city council to hold Mr. Gamble and your director of the Department of Public Works, Mr. McCula, responsible. There should be an investigation into this matter to see why it took seven days. Mr. McCula, not knowing communication, I don't know why that is, but my thought is opportunities where there is failure provides the opportunity to look at how can we improve systems for residents? How can we ensure that this will not happen again? I've never had a concern about my parents aging in this community because I always thought Manistee looks out for each other, but I am concerned that there could go seven days without water and not be communicated by the city manager or the Department of Public Works that they had to reach out. I've talked to other administrators from surrounding counties, they are appalled that it took seven days. I've asked if this now becomes a Department of Health issue or a state issue. Mr. Gamble refused to answer that. He could not tell me what the city's responsibility is to providing residents with water access. I'm asking what that is. I have reached out to city managers in the past, and I will tell you, we've not always seen eye to eye, but I have always felt heard, they've explained the process. I've asked to file a formal complaint in regards to this matter. I have received no communication since last week from Mr. Gamble's office, and I have the emails to prove it. Communication seems to be the biggest issue here. I chose to return to Manistee. I was raised here and I chose to return here. People have the opportunity to leave, but Manistee draws them back for whatever reason, and I think we need to look at that. And the fact of the matter that when I brought up a multi-generational family business that has ties to this community, and Mr. Gamble pretty much spit in their face by dismissing them, I think it's great to look for new businesses, but we can't turn a blind eye on the businesses that have built this community and transformed it into what it is. So I anxiously await a response. I've requested a meeting. I'm hoping that that can be conducted, but when I ask who the city attorney is, since he opened that up, I don't think I should be waiting four days to figure out who the city attorney is.
Thank you.
That's what I have.
Would anybody else like to address the city council?
Mayor and council, my name is Shirley Madden for 22 Lake Shore Road, Manistee, and I am representing the Great Lakes Environmental Festival. And this year is the first year that we're having this festival, and I have, the Great Lakes Environmental Festival, the group has presented a resolution to the council, and we're asking that you support this endeavor of having the Great Lakes Environmental Festival in Manistee. We're, the resolution states that whereas we are proud to live in the city of Manistee located on Lake Michigan, we recognize that we must all work together to maintain a healthy, sustainable Great Lakes ecosystem, and whereas we recognize that a clean, healthy, sustainable ecosystem is essential to support the tourism industry with direct support to our economy, and whereas we recognize that a tremendous effort must be made to maintain safe and clean drinking water for our area and to have our water tested to eliminate any unsafe chemicals, and whereas we recognize that living in an environmentally friendly area supports the well-being of all of our citizens, adults and children, and now therefore be resolved by the city of Manistee will become the hometown for the Great Lakes Environmental Festival. And this year, it's going to be on Earth Day, and it will be on Earth Day in the preceding years. This is the premier year, and as you've heard of Traverse City Film Festival, and people flock to go to the Traverse City Film Festival, just envision people rushing to Manistee when they hear about the environmental festival that is going to take place here in Manistee. In years to come, it will be a three-day festival, and I just want you to just envision, you know, downtown city of Manistee, a buzz with people, going to the restaurants, going to the hotels. I mean, this is going to be a very big event for the city of Manistee, and we're asking you to support this with the resolution. The city of Manistee will support the community involvement by you going to the Ramsdale Theater, the Vogue, the West Shore Community College, the downtown campus, and just see that the hotels, restaurants, the shops, all of those, people will be coming here for this film, for this festival. And we will have film and speakers from many different areas. This year, we will be at the Vogue Theater, and we'll be showing a premiere, a worldwide premiere film, Great Lakes Water, One Life, and I'm not sure about that title.
Great Lakes, One Water for Life.
Thank you. Okay. And we have contacted all of the schools, all of the high schools in the county, and believe it or not, we have one hundred and seventy-one students coming on Friday for the first Great Lakes Environmental Film Festival, and these students are STEM students, and that's the science, technology, engineering, math students. One hundred and seventy-one will fill that, the Vogue Theater this coming Friday. We even had to tell community that we can't even have you coming in because we have all the students there. And plus, the Vogue is not allowed to have that many people there because of the COVID and all. So we are just thrilled that the students are very anxious to get involved with this environmental film festival. I mean, the environment is not only for us, it's keeping our environment safe and secure, and our drinking water safe, this is all for our children as well. So I would just recommend that the council, we're asking that the council support us with the resolution, that you will also be supporting the Great Lakes Environmental Festival. And we're, this is the first year, so, you know, if you are able to come by on Friday to take a look at the activities that's going on at the, at the Vogue, we would appreciate that, but thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Anybody else like to come forward? You're no more public comment. We're moving on to officials and staff. Mr. Gamble.
Couple updates. The EDA grant, request for more information about the South River Walk, that was submitted on Friday, so hopefully we'll get the funding for that improvement. We've also had some interest in some of the Renaissance Park properties, so we had some offers, so those will be coming forward to council. My recollection of the call with Mr. Pratt's a little bit different, but I will be reaching out to him to discuss this further, so thank you.
Mr. Wilson, it's delightful to have you again in our chamber.
Thank you. It's good to be here two times in a row. I don't believe I've ever covered two meetings in a row, but I have nothing to add other than I will relay Mr. Saylor's best wishes. I spoke to him on a Zoom call earlier, well, actually, it was yesterday. He is still stuck in Prague in the Czech Republic, waiting for the ten-day waiting period after his negative COVID test to get on an airplane and come home. He's, his vacation was scheduled to terminate last Saturday, and they're stuck in Eastern Europe until this Saturday, but he hopes to be here the next meeting and said to give everybody his best wishes, so.
Thank you. Heather?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Bradford?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you very much.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Fire chief?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Police chief?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Jeff McCula, DPW?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Bachmann?
What do you think jumped out at me tonight? The first we've heard that the sewer company told the city they had a bill, we called them and helped with that, and they told them probably they're going to go back to the press. Would you check with Brandon to get the details on that and find out?
So I did have Brandon, I did, I had Brandon do a write-up on it. There was some debris in their lateral on their property, so private property issues, the city can't pay for that, and that's why I submitted the claim to the insurance. If it was something that would be covered by insurance, it was not, so there was debris in that lateral on private property.
And that's what the bill from Salmon was detailed as being for damages that occurred on their property?
That's my understanding.
I have a copy of the bill if you'd like to look at it, Mr. Bachmann.
I would not, it wouldn't be appropriate for the city manager.
No, it's not appropriate.
Okay.
Mr. Salmon wrote on there that that had nothing to do with the blockage.
Anyway, would you just look into that and confirm what it is? My second issue is, they made a specific complaint against the city manager and mayor. Can I assume you're going to talk to the manager about that? I mean, who deals with a complaint against city manager? Not us as a body. I would like you to sit down and kind of get some feedback on that for us.
Okay, we can do that. I have talked to the city manager, and his recollection of the conversation that he had with Mr. Pratt is slightly different.
So would you tell this body that you resolved the complaint against the city manager to your satisfaction? Is that what you're saying?
I haven't had time.
Okay, so you will resolve it to your satisfaction, is that what you're saying?
I think. I think...
I just don't want to just blow it off. I mean, there's a specific...
I'm not trying to blow it off, but it asks, but...
Just feels like they made a specific X, Y, and Z. We should answer X, Y, and Z.
Right.
Whether that's your...
This kind of came up at the end of the week.
Understood, yeah, I understand. I'm not saying it has to be up today. I just want to make sure it doesn't get, like...
But I have talked to Mr. Gamble about it, and I'm sure he'd be willing to talk to any of the council members as well.
I, I understand that, but I think, being the mayor, I think that's probably appropriate. But I take, I trust your judgment to deal with it, let's make it resolved. That's all I need to know, so.
Okay.
And last but not least, the Great Lakes Festival's Friday. We can't get a resolution on it. It's not on the agenda today. I mean, could we at least talk to them, let them know what they need to do next year to get that to us ahead of time, so we can do a resolution for it? That wasn't on this meeting, was it? I didn't miss it, so where did I?
No.
I mean, they want us to do a resolution. We can't, because the meeting's over, and it wasn't on our agenda.
We, we can always support it going forward, if this is going to be coming in.
Yep, same, but we can't vote on a resolution. So I just, maybe for next year, they should know, lead time, how to fill a special request and make it a little smoother for them, so we're not, like, caught on Tuesday to Friday. And that's all I got, though. Thank you.
That's probably more on me, because I was aware that they wanted a resolution, so I'll take that.
That's just form for it, it's just, you know, that's all. I think Heather was gonna take care of it, so, thank you.
Aaron.
I'm, just want to say I'm happy to hear about the festival and excited for you guys in the town, so, good job.
Ms. Lundberg.
I just want to echo a little bit of what Mr. Bachmann's saying about the Pratt situation. I, I would like to see that be taken care of to a point where they aren't upset and we don't have mud on our face for something that we did or didn't do, so that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Gabowski.
I agree with Mr. Bachmann. I was gonna bring that up, but he's ahead of me, so I agree with him. We gotta get to the bottom of this.
Mr. Schmansky.
Again, I, I also support the Great Lakes Environmental Festival. I think it's a, it's a great thing for the city of Manistee. I look forward to trying to attend some of the, I was gonna go to that, by the way, and, darn it, no, no late-night showing, huh? But anyways, thank you very much for, for the effort. Obviously, anybody involved with any kind of an event knows they don't happen quickly. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of manpower, so thank you for doing this. And again, we are one of those Great Lakes communities, so this is in our vested interest to support any initiative to keeping our Great Lakes great. And then lastly, I just wanted to publicly announce that I will not be running for city council for the 5th district, so I'm hopeful that there will be several candidates interested in picking up the petitions, not just for, for my seat, but for the other three seats that are also vacant. Thank you.
They're not exactly vacant at the moment. There are people sitting there.
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that it? Okay. We will miss you if that, when that happens. I just wanted to ask our, the reporter from the News Advocate, if he would be so kind as to put something in the paper about the Great Lakes Water for Life Festival, if you could do something on that.
If he puts something in there, I'm not sure if it was...
It's been, it's already been.
Been there? Okay.
It's been a while, publicized.
I...
Yeah, yeah, because I think, you know, we have a reporter who already covered it by, I think he covers the, he covers the environment, so he already, yeah, I thought it was all great, so. We'd like to invite you to come and take pictures on Friday of all the kids there.
I probably, me or Connor will be there, so I think I'll cover it on Friday, it's part of budget, so.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm sure that I will have another conversation with Mr. Gamble about how to move this forward, so, with the, with the Pratt's, and get it resolved as best as we can. However, net being said, I don't have much further, other than recovering from a bad cold has been kind of a challenge for me, so I apologize for the hoarseness of my voice. And that's about it. Everybody have a wonderful week, rest of the week. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Take it.